All right. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Counsel, are you all logged in?
Yes.
No, working on it.
Okay, get logged in.
Michael, can I get promoted on Zoom?
Thank you.
Good. There's no one in the front row. We never call on anyone either, so.
Struck lightning.
Suzanne will let you get us started with roll call.
Okay, Mayor LaBar.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Nikai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Ott.
Here.
And Councilmember Zuluaga.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, starting at number three, ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And we're gonna start 3A, presentation by community partnership of programs offered to Woodland Park community, and I'm gonna go ahead and let Michael introduce.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I had the privilege of going and touring the now-new-ish building that Community Partnership is located in back in January of this year and was not familiar with the program at all. And coming away from it, I am sure many people in this audience know about it, perhaps some don't. I was absolutely blown away. There's a number of great staff there who are very well-versed in their trades, and they serve all kinds of people in our region. And so I asked Jody and her team to come present to counsel and just use the opportunity to explain what Community Partnership does, who they serve, kinds of cool things that are going on, just kind of to let us all know and to look for new opportunities for the city to partner possibly and for others in the community, and just kind of bring awareness. So just want to provide some context before Jody comes up.
Thank you. That was a very generous introduction. My name is Jody Mahrez. I'm the CEO of Community Partnership Family Resource Center. Thank you for the invitation to present tonight. Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Too much air.
My agency just recently returned to Woodland Park after many years of being located in Dubai, and this is a great opportunity to reintroduce ourselves to the community of Woodland Park. Our mission is right there on the first slide, strengthening Teller County families. We want our families in Teller County to be resilient and self-reliant and positive contributors back to our community. Thirty years ago exactly, this is our 30th anniversary, our agency was founded by the city of Woodland Park's very own Sally Riley, and she had this vision of an umbrella organization that housed multiple complementary services under one roof to fill gaps that were existing at that time in human services and family support services. And so just 30 years later, our organization is still doing that same exact work across Teller County. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so obviously governed by a board of directors. This is a current roster of our board members. We provide jobs, 27 currently, to be exact. We have, this picture is our team, last October, on the day we closed on our new Woodland Park building, we're celebrating about just over half of our team are Woodland Park residents. And we've grown a ton, as you can see on this graph. Currently, we are bringing in over $1 million per year in funding to provide jobs and to provide essential services to the residents of Teller County. And when I describe our organization, I like to break our name. We have a really long name. It's not super specific, but if you break it into two pieces, it really describes the two different types of work that we do. Community partnership refers to the collaborations that we participate in, the networks. Here's a list of many of our key partners, not everyone, and also some of the groups that we've served on. Collaborations are really important in communities because it allows agencies to share resources for a larger cause and to cut down on duplication of effort and services. So Community Partnership does contribute quite a bit of resources and leadership to many of these groups. And then the second half of our name, Family Resource Center, obviously describes the direct services that we do with families. A Family Resource Center is a safe, nonjudgmental place for families to seek support when they're navigating a crisis or something difficult in their lives, but it is also a place for any family to go, to meet other families, to participate in enrichment and education opportunities, and to engage in their communities. This is a list. I won't read all of it to you, but maybe just point out a few important things. This is a list of what makes our service model successful. We have, all of our programs are evidence-based, which means we can measure the outcomes of the work that we're doing. We feel that the best way to support a child's development is to ensure that the parents in the community have the tools and the education and the support that they need to be that best parent for their children. And I'll skip down to the third bullet from the bottom. This is a list of protective factors that all families need in order to thrive, and this is the heart of the work that we do. Every single one of our programs contributes to bolstering these protective factors in our communities' families. And that goes a long way to achieving our overarching goals of child maltreatment prevention and family preservation. We have probably, currently we have 18 individual programs and services, so it's too many to go through one by one. But in your packets, you have a brochure. You're welcome to open them. They're all listed inside with brief descriptions of each. But instead, I'm going to just introduce program areas to you for the sake of time. This slide is listing our early childhood programs. We partner with our local schools currently to bring exercise and nutrition programming to our students. We have programs that the entire family can participate in. Here's a list of many, and everything from cooking classes to our family advocates who work individually with families on goals for long-term change. So these are families that are with us for quite a while that we meet with regularly, and they have a family plan, and they're really going after changing their situations. Then we have community offerings as well. You can see them listed there. Everything from adult exercise to GED classes. We are the only GED program in Teller County, the only GED testing site. And then we have additional resources. We're really grateful to be able to provide some of these things, like food and financial assistance to families who are really facing barriers to participating in some of our programs and services. And sometimes this is, this is kind of a hierarchy of need, and when we're able to address that, families are more successful. And on this slide, we have some, just some key data points from a return on investment report that came out in 2021, and that is also in your packet as well. It has kind of a turquoise border across the top. If you're interested in learning more about it, I'm just gonna summarize it quickly. It was a national study, so two family resource centers across the country were selected to participate in this report that was meant to show the return on investment of a family resource center's work to its local child welfare system. And we were so honored to have been selected. They wanted one rural community to participate and one urban community to participate. They were looking for family resource centers that had clean and accessible data and evidence-based programs and a very strong partnership with their local county department of human services. And Teller County, Colorado was selected as the rural community, and Orange County, California was selected as the urban community. These two statistics are specific to our community. One that I pulled from the report, one finding was that for every dollar invested in community partnerships' prevention programs, the Teller County Department of Human Services saved an estimated $2.92. That's the return on investment largely in unopened child welfare cases. And then the other exciting point that was discovered during, in the report, is that since our partnership with Teller County Department of Human Services, we have seen a reduction in the rate of our child abuse neglect instances in Teller County, a steady decline. It used to be more than double the state average, and just before COVID, it was for the first time ever less than the Colorado State average. This is very validating to us, to see those numbers come out of that report. Okay, thank you. Our building, this is exciting. We are making incredible progress, not just with our capital campaign goal, which you can see on the slide, but also with the renovation of the building. It used to be a bank, and it very much still kind of looks like a bank. It has vaults and everything. So we are slowly transforming it into a community center. And you can see in the center of the slides during construction photos, and then to the right are the vision of what the spaces will become. Oh, next slide. I was looking for the mouse. And another exciting thing that happened recently in May, our project was approved as a enterprise zone contribution project. So as this group, I'm sure, is aware, the state of Colorado has identified certain regions across the state as enterprise zones, which means those communities will benefit from incentivized investments in their local economies. Woodland Park falls within an enterprise zone, so when our agency moved back into Woodland Park, we were able to apply for approval for this building project, and we received it. And that's an honor as well, because what that means is that the state of Colorado deems our center as beneficial to the economy and the community of Woodland Park. The incentives that the state provides for investments in this project are a tax credit of 25% of the donation given, and that's a tax credit. So we would still, when we donate to this project, still receive all the regular tax deductions that we get when we donate to nonprofit organizations. But in addition to that, a tax credit of 25% of our donations are received, and tax credits are, in my opinion, more valuable than a deduction because it's applied directly to what you owe, so you can pay your bills, your tax bill with it. And my last slide is announcing an event this weekend, on Sunday, on Sunday, at Paradox from noon to 2:00. And this is put on by Paradox and the Peak Antler Company. This is the fifth year that they've put this event on. It's grown every year significantly. I would say it is officially a large event. It's super fun. There's live music and food and tastings. We have this year 12 barbecue teams entering their food into different categories of barbecue and smoked meats and sides and sauces. It's very competitive and really fun. We have an all-star team of judges that are gonna be tasting, and there's a lot of buzz about it on Facebook. They have their own Facebook page, Smoke in the Youth Pass Summit. And our very own city manager is going to be judging this year, so be sure to support the event and cheer him on. It's a high-pressure position. And then the proceeds go to Community Partnership and Focus on the Forest, so support at that event is definitely appreciated. And that concludes my presentation. I would love to host you for a tour where you can come kind of see what's happening in the building as often as you want. Honestly, it changes quite a bit. Meet our team and hear more details about our programs if you're interested that I didn't cover tonight. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for your time.
Thank you very much. Can I make a plug for you? Do you mind, Mayor? Go ahead. I recently did a Facebook Live with Renee Bunting from the Sheriff's Office. It was brought to our attention that the food pantries are in significant need of supplies for the pantries, which serve a huge portion of our population, very dependent. And it's even worse than it was back in COVID when we did this before, Jody. So I'm just appealing to everyone to help out, if you can, with the various food pantries, one of which is at the Community Partnership in the vault.
Yeah, in the vault.
And if you can help out, if you're in a position to do that. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you so much.
I would like to thank you, too, for your Pearson View Testing Center that's now here. It saves me from having to go to Garden of the Gods. I think that's the closest testing site, so.
Yeah, thank you.
For insurance E's and several other CE classes, so that's pretty cool.
Oh, I had no idea. Thank you for bringing that up.
So thank you. That's pretty awesome.
We used to have our GED students used to have to go to Colorado Springs to take their GED tests, and that's tough on families that struggle with transportation. So we took it upon ourselves to start our own. So now Teller County has one. It's open to everyone.
And Jody, one other question for Sunday is that I see you have pre-purchased tickets available. Can you also get them at the door?
You can get them at the door. We had trouble with long lines for tickets, so we've been trying to sell them ahead of time to kind of cut down on that, but yes, they are available at the door.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll just, any citizen here that listened to the presentation, anybody online, if you see a family that may be in need, please pass the word on to them. I did have the opportunity to tour the facilities with George Jones actually brought me over, one of the board members, and Jody took me through. It's impressive what they're doing to help families. And some people, you don't get a book on how to be a good parent when you become a parent, and some people struggle in being effective parents and good parents. They have professionals there. I watched a few of the classes. They were going through some moving, but they are professionals out there. And when you watched the instructors and the teachers, you knew they are professionals, and that was a quality thing. It's probably why you got such great ratings here. They do have a great return on investment to our community. So Jody, thank you for what you do and your staff.
Thank you. I will pass that on to our team. We do have a fantastic team.
Thank you.
Mayor, before Jody steps down, if I could ask her a couple of quick things, and maybe covered it and I just missed it. One, is there ways for folks who want to volunteer to get involved?
They can, yeah. They can contact us for volunteering. The needs that we have vary so much. We would just love to hear from people what their skills are and what they'd like to contribute and see if we have a match for them.
The other one is, I'm assuming you can make donations, and can we do that at your website?
Absolutely. You can do it on our website, and there's information about enterprise own tax credits there as well, if you're interested in that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item 3B is presentation of donation to the city of Woodland Park from the American Legion for repairs for a damaged sculpture in Lyons Park.
Even that, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmen and women. I'm Dan Williams, 3275, County Road 61. I'm one of your commissioners at the current chair, but I am here tonight as the commander of the American Legion up here at Woodland Park post 1980. I want to start by just saying thank you for your support of the veterans in general in this community. It's obvious to any of us that came here tonight, you could park out here because you're showing your support in a really big way for the veterans rally that's gonna happen. So that's nothing new. You guys always showed that support. So thank you from the bottom of our heart. Secondly, as you know, this year, we already have the Vietnam Memorial. If you go over there like we did today, you'll see folks over right now. Folks have come throughout the night, and so thank you for allowing us to do that at the school. And as you know, there's another memorial that's gonna be unveiled. I know a lot of you will be there on Saturday. You know, the late Mayor Val Carr and Mayor Neil Levy and I walked that ground several times, once before Dixon and once after Dixon. They both had the same vision, very different men, both good men, but very different men in their approach to leadership and politics, but they both had a vision for that little corner of Woodland Park. So it can be an emotional time for all of us. So thank you for your support, and thank you for that. The last time I appeared before you, we had a spirited discussion about the role of government and memorials. I think some of you remember, you know, I know a couple of your new since then. And that discussion, in my opinion, went something like this. I do still believe this, that the ground on which a memorial goes is generally provided by the jurisdiction, Washington DC, Woodland Park, Teller County, Victor, Cripple Creek. There's another ceremony going on Sunday, as you know, for that. But I think we sort of agreed that the folks that paid for those memorials are nonprofits and the people that are most impacted. Those are the veterans that use it as a touchstone. And so, as you know, as Hillary mentioned, that a mayor mentioned, a little less than a year ago, we had one of the most holy memorials destroyed over there, damaged over. That's the Soldiers' Cross. And that's for those who've been to combat and lost soldiers there, and I think most of us have. That's all you have in combat to recognize at that moment for those people who remember the rest of their lives. When you take the rifle, when you turn it upside down, and you put the helmet on, it's been happened since the time of the Gladiator. And so when we found out that one was destroyed, we all cried. We all shed tears. And so the local artist, he's from Victor, his wife happens to be a county employee, and so it came to my attention through an anonymous source that you guys paid for that. You know, so I just remember the discussion we had before, and that is, it just speaks volumes of your patriotism and your support of this particular group of people, about 6,000 veterans and their families up here. And so I talked to the American Legion, you know, we just had this big event for the Fourth of July, raised some money. We generally take that money and give it to folks indeed, just like Jody does. But what we thought we'd do is, if it's okay with you, is I think you paid $1,500 or so, we'll bring you, we have a check for you for $750. We'll pay for half. And then we'll do our best to make sure that we continue to educate people, starting with, on Saturday, we talked about this new memorial, the importance of those memorials, and why they have to be protected. And so with your permission, Adam, I'd like to go and present this to Suzanne. It's a check for $750.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your support. We'll see you this weekend.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Not just thanks to Dan, thanks to the Legion, too.
Absolutely.
All right, we're on to 3C, and that's presentation of Police Department awards, and our chief of police is here to present. There's a lot of cops here, Hillary. I know. I thought they were here for you, Kelly.
I guess we need to go to the park.
That wasn't.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, for the opportunity to come before you again and try to do our best to highlight the work that these five men and women do for this community every single day. You all have known it. It has been a pleasure for the last four and a half months of my career here to get to know that. If I can be selfish, Mayor, I'd like to take 30 seconds. You all probably know, I spent the first 30 years of my career in the city of West Spring in Central Florida. And I found out today that a lot of my former coworkers and friends had to deal with a fairly tragic situation today, where a young mother, her young daughter and family dog were struck by a lightning bolt waiting to pick her up from school. They say Central Florida is the lightning capital of the world, and clearly, this is one of those examples. What apparently was a storm looming in the distance, well, it wasn't even overhead, reached out and struck. Happy to report that the young lady and the family dog are going to be okay. Sadly, the mother did not make it. So of course, my thoughts go out to my old city, my old crew, in ways that I can't even fathom. So thank you for allowing me to be the 35 or 45 seconds to say that. So I'd like to get back to the, to the meaning of why we're all here. I'd like to thank the members of the police department who have decided to come out and help me support their peers in the presentation of two lifesaving awards this evening to two of the officers who are here, Officer Jeff Sanchez and Officer Art Corpus. Both of these gentlemen served this community day in, day out, alongside the members who are here and those who aren't able to make it tonight, in a way that quite honestly has been impressive to watch, and I am proud to stand alongside all of them in continuing goal of providing what I like to call concierge-level service to all of you. So if you'll allow me a few minutes to take this microphone out of this whore and come up front, I'd like to invite Officer Sanchez and Officer Corpus up front with me. Feel free to bring your families up if you like. Try to not to trip over this cord. We have a taker. The children didn't want to come up.
Come on, kids.
So, yeah, guys, I kind of want to blade off this way so we can be seen by the council and whatnot. It's a family affair.
Chief, he wants to get a video of it. You want to give your camera to somebody over there? You sure?
Okay. Here's the beauty of it. It's all me and YouTube. I watch a lot of these meetings on YouTube. Nonetheless, again, thank you all very much. Sometimes we find ourselves in a position where at a moment's notice, we're called into action to render lifesaving measures to those who need it. In our experience, sometimes we find that oftentimes those are maybe older folks in the community. But interesting side note to both of these cases that we're dealing with tonight, they involve teenagers. And that's pretty rare. Even if you ask many folks in the medical discipline, they will tell you, it's not often that we deal with cardiac issues or CPR-type issues with teenage victims, but in this case, we did. As is oftentimes the case with lifesaving awards, sometimes they have the best turnout ever, and sometimes they don't. We have a case of each one represented here tonight. One is the case of a 13- or 14-year-old young man who some of you are probably familiar with, that artworked on right literally behind where the church is on the other side of the road, actually, over here some months back. And that young man, you may have seen in some social media posts, is doing very well. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, the young lady that Officer Sanchez had the fortune of coming across that day was not able to make it. However, due to his actions, her family was able to partake in some very personal issues for her medical treatment that allowed them to carry that out, and had not been for his actions, the family would not have been afforded that opportunity. So the awards are given in that fact. They're not always given simply when a victim lives. The lifesaving measures are recognized regardless. So if you'll allow me to set this down, I'm gonna present them their plaques. Let's keep it. All right, Art, I'll give you yours real quick. You got the whole crew here. I'm gonna give it to you. You can do it there. Okay, so what we have here, everybody, and you'll forgive me for my back here, are just a couple of plaques that we have made up, recognizing these fine gentlemen for their work and their lifesaving awards to be presented on behalf of everyone here, their peers, and with my sincere appreciation. Thanks. So thank you very much, congratulations. He's got pictures written all over. Don't go anywhere.
And Chief, just briefly, it's not, not as significant as a plaque, but I do have Mayor's pins for both of the officers.
Look at that. Fantastic. And again, everyone, thank you for your time tonight. Everyone who showed up tonight, thank you very much for your time as well. And I'll see you all.
Good, good start to the evening. All right. And next up, we have three D, which is Presentation of the Downtown Development Authority Approved Project, and the presenter is Tony Perry. It's not anything. We're not voting on it.
Thankfully, I don't see a countdown clock. I'll try to. I'll try to be as succinct as possible. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing us the time to catch you up on the DDA and what we've been doing. Look real quick to see who's here. And so we actually have John Demelki, DDA member. We have Al Born. He's actually a founding member from two thousand twenty. And we have David Mahars. Hopefully I got his name right. And then we also have the applicants chosen as the developer. We have Derek Waggoner and Mr. Mark Weaver. So the DDA Board has chosen Tava House Properties as the lead developer of Woodland Station. As we work under the umbrella of you, the City Council, we are here to ask your consensus support moving forward. I'll cover some history of the two applicants, the process that led to our decision, and at the end I'll provide an update from the Tava Group. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that you have at the end. First, we would like to recognize all the citizen volunteers that have served on the DDA Board through the years. It started in two thousand and it was put together by two thousand and one, and it's been in existence since then. And without their efforts, trials and tribulations, we would not be bringing this great news to the community here today. I believe every iteration of the DDA Board served to the best of their abilities. The Sally Riley put together a twenty-eight pages presentation of all the proposed uses, uses over the years. And it's something to go look at if you're interested. It's, it's quite a marvel to look at from very simple usage to very elaborate dream uses that I would call Disneyland. The board is fortunate to have two parties, call them Williams Forge Work Group and the Tava House Group that emerged. Both had compelling and different visions. I would say that ultimately, a majority of the board members liked the idea that Tava Group offered a cash purchase with construction financing provided by TDK Bank. Another factor was that the ownership group were all local and had a proven business, and all the business persons had a proven track record. And they were being, bringing, excuse me, an anchor project. The Forge Works Group had some local representation as well and had a well-defined process. They would use to determine what would go into Woodland Station, working with their partners. As a venture capital firm out of Denver, Forge Works, they were confident that once they did their due diligence, they would be able to obtain the capital to make the project make sense after due diligence. Both Tava House Properties and Mr. Williams expressed an interest in Woodland Station back in two thousand nineteen. The Tava Group wanted to acquire a portion of the property commonly referenced as lot two. When the DDA decided to put the cog on lot two, the group looked at other locations. In the subsequent years, Mr. Williams had a continuing dialogue with the DDA. If we fast forward two years to September twenty twenty-one, Mr. Williams offered up a contract to be the developer of Woodland Station. His desire was to put down some earnest money that was refundable and be named the developer so he could start the due diligence process. In November twenty twenty-one, the board started discussions of a ninety-day exclusivity period to prepare to give Forge Works and Mr. Williams time to prepare, prepare a presentation to the board. At the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, Mr. Williams introduced Mr. Chad Anderson of Forge Works. I think it was very vital in their presentation to us. They brought some backbone, some stout, some good history and connections. On that day, the DDA Board gave the Williams Forge Works Group a ninety-day exclusivity agreement with the DDA Board. Their intention was to come back with a plan and to be prepared to execute and put money into the effort. We're going to use one here. A lot of empathy for our veterans who lost. At the end of that ninety days, frankly, the, the DDA Board was not ready to name them as the developer. It was a tremendous improvement over previous discussions, but it wasn't there yet in our opinion. So we voted on a sixty-day pause to see if there were any other parties interested. Mr. Weaver, one of the principals of Tava House, has been attending DDA meetings for years. In February, Chair Larson inquired about the status of Tava House and who were near shovel-ready in another property in town. Once the Tava Group learned of the pause, Mr. Waggoner, another principal, indicated he still preferred the Woodland Station site. They had a heart for wanting to do something in the downtown. We then had multiple presentations, discussions from both parties. Everything is online, available to you if you want to take a look at it. It was fortuitous that we had two real parties interested. I don't think any other previous DDA Board could say that, that they actually had two parties that seemed real that were ready to do something for the community and for business. It was also fortunate, I think, that both parties were very unique and had very distinct approaches. So I think when you're having to make a decision of one party versus the other, to know that they're very different approaches, very different styles, I think would help the board in making their decision. We decided to help the decision process by asking both parties to answer thirty-two questions in a short amount of time to have a side-by-side response so the board could discern the differences between the two proposals. It was pretty detailed questions that aligned with previous development agreements. And so we also think it will start forming the basis for the next development agreement. Both parties completed and turned it into the DDA in less than a week and both met the deadline. Mr. Neil, who is the DDA re-ess, I mean, I worked very hard to make sure that in that process that the timing was fair and equitable in terms of when they received the information and the process for getting questions or responses back. Also, as Chair, I asked all board members for this board, for this board meeting in August, asked them to come prepared to actually state on the record for the public to hear the logic, the reasoning behind their decision for one applicant over the other. Very proud to report that I believe every boardman, member met that challenge very well, even the, the dissenter who prefer the other applicant. Well, a few met, so I'm getting gotten now. Ultimately, the vote was six to one with two recusals. And I encourage you to watch the video of the vote to validate there were the others. So so DDA net steps. We need to work with the attorney on the transaction contract. We need to work with Tava Group to provide a development agreement, then review with our attorney. We need to work to build reasonable water developments in the contract to protect the city. And what I will say with that is that developments are risky by their very nature. And so I believe we chose the least risky option of the least rest to the city, but we do want to do a good job of making sure that we protect the citizens and the city in this process. The Tava Group will provide an official update in each monthly meeting and more often if warranted. And I think it is our intent to provide a written report to the DDA every, or to the City Council every month as to the developments during the process. Once we execute the sales contract, we will pay off approximately the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is owed to the city of Woodland Park for the property. That has to be part of the transaction. That'll leave the DDA with approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our balance sheet. We plan on playing a, playing a role, working with the city to seek out rounds and monies to further the DDA mission. So really what that's all about is looking outside of our community to find those grants and monies that we can bring back into our community to not only further possibly Woodland Station, but also other downtown development targets. And we are prepared, you know, the, the paper this last week, the sub-headline made it appear like the Tava Group was going to get nine hundred thousand dollars for additional development. If you read the article, not skimmed it, you know that that was probably to get someone's attention, to get them to read the article, but that is not the case. We do expect parties to come back to us with fifth deals or a tip request. We will deal with those each one by one, and we have every intention to be consistent with all previous deals. And we also plan on carving out the net co-moneys that are due to the fire district if we do any future deals. That's a commitment this board is making. We will also work to provide as much support as possible in supporting fire protection in our process. So we're actually working with the city to do some pro formas to see if we can provide even more monies back to the fire district. We think that's critical for our communities. So the Tava Group provided an update to us this week. And I'll just go through what they had to say. Tava House has so, has been selected to buy the six point three acres that the DDA owns. They are aware of the potential V cup environmental issues. They're aware of the ditch issue, the drainage issue on the property, and a few other things that they're going to have to deal with. They are offering eight hundred thousand dollars cash that they have monies in escrow ready to go for title. And I've also spoken with their banker and have assurances that not only are they qualified to build this project out, but they're also qualified to get in the infrastructure monies that they may need. Their only contingencies in the contract are going to be review and approval of the title, pretty standard. And their sign-off on the V cup in phase one. And I do know they communicated that they've already been evaluating it for a while. David Weekly Holmes has been evaluating it for a while. And so they're very aware of what that's looking like. They plan to close forty, forty-five days after the execution of the purchase contract. That keeps getting pushed because as you know, all these meetings are very lethargic and purposeful in how we do things. So you don't do things very quickly when you're dealing with me, the government. See. They're probably, they're probably anticipating a closing date now around mid-October. And it just really depends on getting the agreements together. That's their only holdup. They plan on working on entitlements this fall and start construction. They wanted to start, I think, before the end of the year, but they're being realistic and targeting April twenty twenty-three with Tava House opening in twenty twenty-four. They've already arranged a smart meeting with the city of Woodland Park. It's scheduled for Monday, August twenty-ninth. Myself and another DDA Board member will participate in that meeting with them in process. Their architect team, civil engineer, will be at that meeting along with all the various departments. It's actually for a developer or someone wanting to come into our community. I think the smart meetings are very smart to do. It's a great process. So so they have committed, when they came in twenty nineteen, they were just looking at Tava House. They recognized that someone had to step up and take responsibility for finishing out this process. And so it's going to be a couple of things. The Tava House Restaurant, it was four or five elements to it, is going to be a ten thousand square foot, five and a half million dollar project. The Forge, not to be confused with Forge Works, is a group of local men and business persons. I would characterize them as fathers who want to put a bouldering gym in Woodland Park. And they're planning on going to Woodland Station. That's about a five thousand square foot building, estimated project cost of about one and a half to two million. They're anticipating additional retail space, forty-five hundred square feet, possibly one point three five million. And that's yet to be determined. So they are actively looking to the community first to see if there's someone that wants to join them in Woodland Station and to come up with some creative ways to move your business. If you're at a point where you've been leasing and you're ready to go to that, that's level of owning, there could be an opportunity here. So I encourage you to reach out, reach out to the Tava Group if you're interested. So that's a, they're also planning on open green space in for those projects just identified which are commercial in nature, and that's critical because commercial projects will bring hats monies back into the district, ergo paying back all the efforts over the last twenty-one years of Woodland Station and the efforts of the DDA. Now, the other half of the equation, they have a letter of intent with David Weekly Holmes, who are the largest private builder in the country. They built a lot of tract homes. They're about to put twenty-five thousand homes out east of the Springs, but about thirty percent of their business is what they call urban projects. And so Dustin, who is the president of David Weekly here in this region, is very excited. I've met with him about Woodland Station. You know, it's six point three acres now. They may attempt to acquire adjacent properties to expand the footprint. But they love the concept that this could be a signature kind of urban renewal project. Heard him talking about tying into the trail system from the project because what they're going to bring is approximately sixty housing units, about twenty million dollars of a project. And their intent is to, again, make it urban walkable. The Tyler Group has already expressed that they want to be sensitive to the history with respect to Saddle Club, Mr. Berkstrom, the Ute Indians, and Mrs. Carter, who is honored on the cog row. So the infrastructure, very, very rough estimate, they say. Because until they dig in on a few things to get validation, if they're putting that at about one point five million growth resource. So all in all, this development should be about a thirty million dollar project. Tavo will be in the process right away. So that anchor commercial business will populate, hopefully followed quickly by the Forge and then possibly the other commercial. The residential side, which is also an important aspect because we think why this is happening now is that the market is ready for it and that there's parties wanting to step up, put it in the capital and make this a reality and hopefully turn it into something positive for the city. So again, you know, I think this particular board, they, they've all indicated an interest in participating in putting whatever time it takes to make this successful from our perspective. From our perspective, ultimately, it's the developer and the market that will drive everything. But having seen uh frankly, all the financials and some of the other information, I feel confident that this is the group that's going to make it happen. So, any questions?
Council questions, comments?
Yeah, what's going on with you, Tony? First it's your lit, your foot, and now your arm. Are you in a Fight Club or something we don't know about?
It's going to be a hundred, the $10 million man.
I know.
They don't have buy on parts.
They don't?
This is a tour in the apron from wrestling my college.
Oh, gosh. Uh, I'm just curious about the track. So when that goes down, when this, this goes in this development, um, pending it actually happens and hopefully it does, um, is this going to affect like the traffic since we, you know, we already have a traffic problem downtown? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, so yeah, so I mentioned, uh, obviously, uh, Fountain Creek through way. Obviously mentioned the environmental issue with the benzene. And there's actually a photo back here on the wall that probably identifies the culprit of that benzene. 1950s or something. It's a gas tank. I think that's actually the cause of the benzene on the property or one of the causes. Uh, the third uh big potential infrastructure cost is traffic study. And so uh their traffic engineers would have to work with C dot and they have to find a balance between the commercial use and the residential use to frankly, keep the cost realistic and in line. Um, some of the previous presentations we've seen over the years, uh, the 2004, 51 where there were going to be 12 commercial buildings, a theater, a world theater, another bank, all kinds of stuff. Uh, that would have required a tremendous amount of traffic infrastructure. It probably made it untenable in the end. But I think um, uh, from what I've been told, talking to David Weekly, the V cup doesn't scare them. They've dealt with it before. They believe they can find the balance on the traffic study. And they actually believe that there could be some reliever routes that provide some additional support um, to the other streets around it. So uh, that's all for the city and uh all the engineers to kind of figure out. But that, that is kind of in my mind, C dot is always the number one respect when you're talking about the dog. The other questions? Uh, thank you. Yes, we appreciate it. We're working really hard. We're getting everything standardized. Uh, we're going to bring in our attorney to talk, talk about conflicts of interest, just like you've had that training. Um, we're going to probably put on a little work session for the community because uh at the last meeting I attended of a city council, it's clear there's some people that don't understand what the TIF means and how it's applied. Uh, and uh, other than taking, in my opinion, other than taking monies away from other entities, um, you know, the TIF actually can be a good tool if it's applied right. Uh, and, and essentially the theory is that um you're going to get something built that you may not have otherwise gotten built. And uh, after the TIF is over, um, then you have more tax base than you had previously. That's why we indicated to both groups that the balance of commercial to residential was really critical to make the numbers work for everyone, including the city.
Robert had a question.
So uh, Chairman Perry, um, I understand you're presenting this to us to get a consensus from council. And I have some real fundamental uh concerns that I want to put on the record. Um, firstly, in your bylaws, it says that the, the rules of order under section seven, except as provided herein, all meetings shall be conducted under the most recent addition of Robert's Rules of Order. I attended your meeting. You guys did not follow Robert's Rules of Order. And it was concerning because to me, the purpose of you gathering as a body is to discuss the issues. And what I observed with your board is that you all went away to your uh, did your own research. And when it came to the vote, you had no discussion. You had no discussion of the issues that I'm going to bring up here in a minute that are of significant concern to the DDA as a uh, as a body and, and the requirements you have in your disposition agreement and to the city of Woodland Park. So uh, I challenge the actual methodology that you got to to actually uh come to this vote. And I'll just simplify it by saying, when you make a motion, you then allow, so a motion's made and it's seconded. It then goes to discussion. The matter is discussed. You don't come along and, and say, okay, what's your vote? What's your reason? That's your, that's not even the proper process according to Robert's Rules. That's fine. You want to get everybody's comments on record, but it's wrong procedure. So I have a problem with your procedure and uh, and it's part of your bylaws. So you violated your bylaws in my assessment of it. Now, I commend you for moving forward and, and determining a, a direction. But what concerns me is that part of your responsibilities as a board is to ensure the full development of the property. And as I uh heard the presentations, uh, very exciting, conceptually, you know, it's all very exciting. Actually, from both parties, uh, was uh quite exciting. But your role, you can't just, in my opinion, just turn around and sell the property and say, okay, guys, go ahead and develop it. Your job is to ensure the full property gets developed completely. And it's clear to me that the Tava part of this project is ready to go. It could go like, you know, in the fall for sure. But that's not the point of your job. Your job is to make sure that the whole project develops and is able to be deployed. So I take scenario number one. Okay, great. So you say you give approval, so you, you've sold the land. You've sold the, in the way you're proposing is you sell the land to the Tava Group. They go, great. They get the approval on uh what, for working purposes, we'll call Lot Two. And they get break ground on it, go for it and do everything else. David Weekly is not part of this agreement. So whether they choose to, to come alongside uh Derek or not, is, i- it's not defined. So let's say he looks at it and go, oh, man, the benzene's a killer. We can't put a residential housing there because of the benzene toxic levels at, at ground level can't have, let's just say, they can't get it at, at uh single family residents or, or in uh multifamily housing. So he says, you know what? And I'm just taking one. There's three issues as you well delineated. You've got the um, uh, C dot and you've got the headwater of the creek. So you've got a, yeah, sure, great. That's great. We're going to work with David Weekly. But if David Weekly looks at it and says, you know what? We have way more infrastructure exposure here than we can handle. We're passing. Now, you've sold this property to the Tava Group. They have, they have a, in handshake agreement of a, of a party who will work with them. But you don't have, you no longer have fulfilled your office as a DDA board, which is to guide this process through. And i- it doesn't go through until they present their finished plans, not sketches. They're actually finished detailed plans to, to uh Karen for approval and of course, approval by city council. So let's say Tava gets that. Let's say they get that on um, on their particular prop, but the rest of it breaks down. You haven't handled, you, how do you transfer title on one part of it without having the whole thing subdivided? So there, you've got so many issues, in my opinion, you've got so many issues you haven't even addressed. And you're going through to say, oh, sure, we're going to sell you the property, get it off our hands. Make, that's your responsibility is to shepherd this thing through the process, in my opinion. And that's what it says in, in, in your paperwork. So I find this process troubling that it's, it, the conceptual, don't get me wrong, it's exciting. I'm, I'm excited that for that part of it. But the systems you have in place to, to, to employ this, I think, are faulty. And I don't think it's appropriate for you to sell this property in proposed October or whatever without having uh all the pieces you need in place, and you won't have it by then. Uh, I, I, how, no way. Even if Weekly comes in and says, yeah, okay, we're going to go with this, we can see it, they have to get all theirs too. You have to get the entire thing before uh Karen and say, all right, now we're ready. And I know the excitement of, yeah, we're going to do the Tava right now, we're going to go for it. But I, I think that aggregates your responsibility.
Thank you for that. I will respond. First of all, I stepped up as chair to take responsibility to shepherd this through to conclusion, and we will do it. Uh, second of all, uh, you are right. Uh, and I've seen Robert's rules not done properly at these kind of meetings forever. So you are right that uh as chair, I made the decision that one, our DDA would not do executive sessions behind closed doors. Everything was going to be out in the public. Uh, there was discussion, questions during multiple months of presentations and processes. Uh, so yes, I did make the decision that I challenged every board member to step up and to clearly state why they were voting the way they were voting. I thought that was important, given the history of the DDA. I thought it was important, given the importance of this project to the community. And um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I haven't read Robert rules in a while. I'll check to verify it, but I'm not going to challenge you. But yes, I did use that process. I asked them to come and succinctly tell us why they voted that way. Uh, secondly, um, uh, with respect to the process, the devil is in the details with the, the, the transaction contracts. Pretty simple. It's a standard form, very simple to do. The devils are in the detail on the development agreement. And so even though we're transferring ownership, we can't put some teeth in that agreement to protect us against something going south. Uh, most of us, uh, you know, I've led a development. I've, and most of us have seen developments that have gone way south. What I will say is that I believe that the Tava Group is committed to figuring out. They didn't promise to figure out the adjacent properties. They promised to figure it out to six point three acres. Uh, David Weekly has indicated no uh slowdown on their enthusiasm for this project. Uh, number one, number two, if David Weekly walks away for any reason, uh, I believe there's a couple, multiple parties behind them that'll be ready to come in and do the residential. So we will protect the community and the city with the agreement, uh, a better development agreement than we've had before. We will be diligent in watching the process. There is no reason to believe that uh this group doesn't have the financial wherewithal to pull this off. Um, they are committed. They're all open. So they live in this community. They are incented. They are motivated to make this work, period.
I don't have a problem with that. That's, I have no problem with that part of it. The part of it I have a problem with is you, the disposition of this, you must retain control of it. And I, and I, and I'm just concerned.
Zuluwaga, I'm going to remind you.
Yeah.
When we have a speaker, the rule is there's no going back and forth between speaker and council members when they're doing a presentation. I allowed you to ask your questions. He's answering what you had to say to the best of his ability. And I'm going to end it right here because what I'm going to say is the development disposition and agreement is where the details come in. They're just telling us what they plan to do and what they hope to do. It may or may not happen, just like a cog car happened and a horse statue happened, and then nothing happened. Nothing's happened for 22 years. So they're just coming to say what they're, they're a new board. Here's a new presentation. Here's a new idea. They're just saying, we hope you guys will give us a blessing to carry on. And we can either give the blessing or not, just through consensus. This isn't a vote. You don't even have to say anything. You don't have to agree with it. But that's all that this was supposed to be. So I'm going to end it here. Tony, thank you for your presentation. I wish the best to the DDA and to the developers, and I hope that this is successful.
It will be.
Counsel, I know that they were asking for consensus or that they had an idea of whether we're for it or against it. I'm just going to say if you all are for it, great. If you're not, you're not.
I'd like them to move forward, Mary.
I, they have my consensus here.
Well, this is, this is in presentation. It's not, it's not appropriate for us to.
We're not voting.
We're not voting.
So.
We're giving.
My cautions to this and so.
That's great. Thank you.
The point is, we need to guard the city's interests in this process.
Right. And our job in doing that is when. Yes, but our job in doing that is when they have a disposition and development agreement that comes to planning. And then we are a part of that. Until then, it is theirs.
So, so this is the problem I have, and, and I'm going to uh press it and, and not disrespectfully, just that we can't sell this property, in my opinion, just to sell and say, okay, now you guys go for it. There's, there's a, there's a, there's a process that we have to steward this through, through all of the phases of it. And just to cha- transfer title and say, okay, it's your problem now, is not part of how it works.
Well, legally, if they wanted to put a for sale sign on that lot and a buyer wanted to buy it, the buyer can buy it and it's theirs now. It's not, it's not the DDA's responsibility. So anyways, we're going to end the discussion and carry on.
And to the board or to the council as the board liaison, I, I do promise to you, I am watching everything the DDA board is doing. And I will come back and report to you every step they're taking. It was Tony and I that made the decision to have this presentation to keep you informed. There's no process in place that he even needed to do this presentation.
That's right.
Um, we thought it would be wise. The only vote that the city council will eventually have is contained in the amendment that I asked Suzanne to send out to us at paragraph 3.03. And all the vote is that we shall um, review the developer agreements and approve for compliance with the city requirement.
Right.
Mayor, I move, we move on. We've, this was a presentation.
Thank you.
We really shouldn't have even had this discussion.
Agreed.
Moving on, number four additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda, there are none. Five consent calendar, none. Six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Do you have anyone signed up, Suzanne? No one signed up and nobody on Zoom.
Okay. Seeing no one in the audience, running to the podium. Number seven, unfinished business, 7A, review of the amended, amended bylaws of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And we have Cindy Keating here to present.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Um, on July 7th, at the, at the July 7th council meeting, our board chair, Jeff Webb, presented to you the amended bylaws that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board had approved unanimously on June 8th. At that time, at the July 7th meeting, council requested that our city attorney review the bylaws. We had the city attorney review the bylaws and she made one addition to our bylaws in its section 12. And it's regarding remote participation. Um, since then, we've taken that addition um to the amended bylaws to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They approved the updated amended bylaws at their August 10th meeting unanimously. And tonight, we're coming to you as our recommendation is to approve our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board bylaws, the amendment, and then make that effective as of today. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you want to go through the original amendments, I'd be happy to do that for you as well.
Counselor there, I see council member Neil's hand up.
I went through uh all the corrections you had made, and I think you complied with all of the requests that we had asked of you. But I, I think you might have missed one based on my uh memory of what we had talked about. And it had to do with the um, the one sentence that the board shall consist of seven citizen members at large. I thought we were going to insert uh, uh, seven citizen members of Teller County and, and or El Paso County at large.
I do recall having that discussion, and when we brought that to our city attorney, um, she just wanted us to be able to remind you that city council appoints all of our board members. And so if you, there is a board member that applies that you guys don't, do not want to appoint, that would be under your discretion.
Yeah, I also remember that there wasn't, I didn't think there was consensus on that issue. That was just.
Okay, the way it is. I do believe that one of the um questions, you know, that you had heard, that you had addressed with this when we had um the discussion via email was, is our service area encumbrance of this? And that's what we're trying to do. We have, our service area goes to El Paso County, goes on to Park County, can go out to Douglas County as. We have, our service area goes to El Paso County, goes out to Park County, can go out to Douglas County as well. And then also our majority of our board will always be Woodland Park residents.
So that was an intentional recommendation, Nina?
Yeah, because I didn't feel there was consensus to say those two counties, if my memory serves me correctly. I think it was like two months ago. But I thought that not a majority of you all wanted that to be those two counties, and then your service area is bigger than that. So we figured just keep it simple. And again, you're not, I mean, you guys wouldn't, you have to choose to appoint the person. So the person comes from central Florida, no offense chief, then you might not want to. Right. So I mean, again, if that's, that's up to you as to whether you want to or not. I just felt like the direction was not a majority to specify. So.
I think from what I remember, that was the case. We didn't, we decided there wasn't consensus to do, to do that. So, because we do, we do get to vote on that. We do get to, you know, determine whether or not that's appropriate for them to be in El Paso County and serve on that, you know, so I think that's okay.
Yeah, either would be okay legally, just to be clear.
It was just an observation. I, I thought that it was going to be inserted. So if the council. Yeah, no, counsel, you've given advice and everybody's in agreement that I'm fine.
All right.
Anything further?
No.
Nope.
Sorry, public comment?
I don't see anybody with their hands up. Suzanne, anybody on?
No.
No.
Do we have to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended bylaws of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as presented.
I'll second.
No. Thank you. Council motion has passed unanimously.
On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we thank you for your time in, in reviewing these and your questions and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, on to ordinances on initial posting. Eight A, ordinance number fourteen twenty eight. And Karen is going to present for us.
Good evening. This evening I have for you a request to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty eight, series twenty twenty two, an initial posting. This is an ordinance vacating a portion of right of way overlapping lot one A, the homes at Brecken Heights, Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado, and set the public hearing date for September fifteenth of this year. Within the ordinance, I do want to draw your attention to two typos that we had identified at the planning commission. It occurs in the title and then midway within the ordinance where I think the original packet, it said the homes at Brecken Court. And the actual name of that subdivision is the homes at Brecken Heights. So that has been corrected in the ordinance that we're requesting the hearing on.
Remember, it's initial posting.
Initial posting is just a question.
Sure.
On exhibit A, in kind of the legend in the upper left, it says a replot of lot one and lot four. But lot four is not indicated.
Right, because the original plot for the homes at Brecken Heights encompasses more land area. So that was, it's kind of the pedigree of the land.
That's fine.
Lot one and four was replatted. And so within the homes of Brecken Heights plot, it's specific to lot one A in that particular lot.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a tiered kind of thing.
I, I just didn't know if they had forgotten to put the lot four.
Very good. Council, any further questions? Okay. Can I, I see no, no one running to the podium. Suzanne, any hands?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty eight, series twenty twenty two, initial posting as written.
I'll second it.
Council, you may vote. Thank you. Council motion has passed unanimously.
Very good.
Thank you.
Onto item nine, public hearings. I have no one signed up for items not on, oh, I'm going backwards. That's funny. Ten, new business. None. Eleven, we're at reports already. Yeah, it is amazing. All right. I just have a couple of dates to announce. We have the Woodland Park Farmers Market every Friday from eight to one in Memorial Park. That's eight AM to one PM. Woodland Park Rock Gem and Jewelry Show is happening Friday, August nineteenth through Sunday, August twenty first, from nine AM to five PM at the Uptown Saddle Club. We have the twenty twenty two Salute to American Veterans Rally, Friday, August nineteenth through Saturday, the twentieth. It's the motorcycle ride on Saturday, and it departs from Woodland Park High School. And registration opens at seven thirty AM and it departs at ten AM. We also have the twentieth annual citywide cleanup, August twenty seventh, from nine AM to one PM at Memorial Park. Help clean up the city you love. And then I also have the Pikes Peak Memorial Wall dedication that's happening Sunday, August twenty first, at Mount Passau Cemetery in Cripple Creek at one PM. And that's to honor those from Pikes Peak region that have fallen during the War on Terror. And then I don't have the date, but there's also a program of flags for school that is hosted by the American Legion, and that'll be in September. So I think it is after our, our.
There's three, three separate.
Yeah, there's three separate ones. So.
It starts September, September seventh is the first.
Okay. You can report on our September first meeting. Yeah. So we'll have those dates on the September first meeting as well. Or Councilmember Connors might have them when it's his turn. So. All right, Councilmember Case, thank you.
Mayor LePark, can I just, are we missing one event on the Veterans Rally? Like the ride goes from the school.
Yeah.
At the Memorial Park. When's that part of it?
I assumed Kelly was going to hit it probably.
There's not a ride. There's a poker run that starts at the American Legion tomorrow. And it's in the schedule of events in the program, in the program for the rally. And, and, and that ends, and then the red shirt giveaway, or the red shirt.
That's Friday.
That's tomorrow to support the cause and, and for veterans and helping them out. The POW MIA recognition ride is Saturday morning, seven thirty. Nine thirty is the last registration, and the bikes all leave by ten. And then there'll be a procession out front of the cultural center onto twenty four, and then out to Cripple Creek, and the highway will be closed for that. There should be notification signs on the highway. And then they're all back here in the park for the ceremony at twelve thirty. And at twelve thirty also, we will be unveiling the memorial wall that was built close to Dixon's statue. So that's kind of roughly the schedule. There's music tomorrow from a local band. There's also a beer garden in front, on Henrietta, in front of the office building right here on the corner. And also the stage for the music under the big pavilion, I believe. There's more bands on Saturday evening and afternoon, and there's lots of, lots of vendors. Please support them and support the farmer's market. They'll be part of it as well. And I can guarantee you, as last year when I attended, those bikers will buy out a lot of stuff from the farmer's market vendors as well. That's a good thing about we bikers. We like to spend money. So always welcome them in your community. They're great folks.
I have no idea where they put it all on them bikes.
It's, it's plastic, Frank. It's plastic now. Anyway, that's kind of the rough schedule, but you can see it. It's on Facebook. It's on their website at propromotions.com, pro-promotions.com. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me as well.
Councilmember Connors. Or Kelly, was that it?
I have one more thing from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We did work through the Logan Simpson survey that was sent out to the council and the board. And we went through a lot of things together as a board to give feedback to Logan Simpson on their few questions. Number four, six, and seven. Great stuff. Blah, blah, blah. That's my report. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Connors.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to announce and not announce that a lot, everybody ought to know this by now, I think. But the president did sign the PAC Act, which expands the VA healthcare benefits for burn pit victims and other toxic substances. It goes back as far as Vietnam. So there's a lot of Vietnam vets that can now apply for additional benefits. The flag for schools, the seventh of September is at Columbine. The fifteenth of September is at Gateway, and the, one more, one more, one more. The fourteenth at eight o'clock at Elementary Summit Elementary School. So there'll be three, three schools in September. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Neil.
I have no reports this time.
Councilmember I.
You already had it.
Thanks, Tony.
Yeah. Okay. First off, thanks, Karen. It's also on vacation. Karen sent me the notes for that. And I appreciate that. Mr. Plut continues to pursue his historical designation for the Cristola Bridge. He submitted a request to the state, and they have accepted that request since this meeting. So hopefully we'll see that approved. If that does, it'll go to the Teller County Board of Commissioners for their approval. Committees completed their poster project for the year, and they will start, they'll have a short presentation with the city council in an upcoming meeting. And the next historical committee meeting will be on September twelfth at three thirty PM. That's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Zulawaga.
You reported my report. So city cleanup, twenty seventh, nine to one, at Memorial Park.
All right. Thank you. City attorney.
I have no reports. I thank you.
The manager.
A few things. We have the Citizens Academy application process open right now. It's our second of the year. The applications opened a couple of weeks ago, and they close on September second at five PM. There's twenty five seats available for that class. I think we have a handful of applications so far. So if you are interested, please, please sign up quickly, as those seats usually go pretty quick. We also have the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan online survey for whoever is interested, hopefully everybody. And you can fill that out on what'supwoodlandpark.com. We would really appreciate your, your comments on that. Because that, that determines what our parks and recreation facilities and activities look like in the next ten or so years. Yes. And then, as Jody Mihara said, the Smoke and the Used Pets Summit fundraiser event for Focus on the Forest and Community Partnership, of course, is the Sunday. That was twelve to two PM. Yes. Open to, all right. Good fundraiser out there in Divide, not here in Woodland Park, but benefits Woodland Park programs. So. That's all I got.
Very good. Council, thank you for this evening. This meeting is adjourned.